To order. Is there a motion to have this Planning Commission meeting by Zoom? Would someone like to make that motion, please?
I would move that we have the December 14 Planning Commission meeting via Zoom.
I'll second that.
And I'll do a roll call vote. On that. Row.
Yes.
Eily.
Yes.
DeFranco.
Yes.
Helmrick.
Yes.
Shipley.
Yes.
Welk. Not here. Israel's, yes. Okay. In lieu of, okay. Next on the agenda is roll call. So I will do a roll call vote. One more, yes, please. Row.
Yes.
Eily.
Yes.
DeFranco.
Yes.
Helmrick.
Yes.
Shipley. Shipley.
Yes, sorry.
Yep, that's okay. Israel's, yes. Welk. Okay. Please let the record reflect that Welk is not in attendance at this time. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections that you would like to make to the agenda at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is Helmrick. I'd like to add an item. I'm not sure. It's kind of new. It's kind of old. You can decide. But I'd like us to discuss tonight per last week's board meeting, potential dates in January to do a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Township Board, which would have to be done via Zoom.
And, okay, and where would you like me to put that? In under new business? Or would you like that under board discussion?
I'm fine with either. I'm not, it's kind of both. It's one or the other, so.
What is?
We've talked about it. I would just maybe have to do new business because we're talking about schedules, but.
So we'll put that under new business, item C, and that's to set a date in January. Is that correct?
Yes, for a joint board Planning Commission open, you know, public meeting.
And the intent is for?
The long overdue annual review of the master plan and related issues.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
So added. Thank you, John. And then, is there any other addition to the agenda this evening? I have one that I would like to add. Under 7A zoning ordinance text and map amendment. Could we please add a public comment under that? I know that this is not a public hearing, but there may be people who wish to speak to this topic. And being that we only had it on our agenda once, and that was last month, I think it's in the best interest of our community to allow them to speak to this, too. If there's anyone here that wishes to. Is that acceptable?
I, I, do we? Is it, is it enough to allow them to speak tonight? I mean, if they don't know that they are open to speaking, would it change the fact that anybody might show up if they knew that they were open to speak on this topic?
No, because there are two areas for public comments. But I just thought if someone wanted to address something specifically here, they could, too. Being that we have representatives here to talk about the water issue. I thought that it would be a place to put it. Otherwise, we can leave it as is and they can address it under public comment. Whatever your thoughts are, and I just appreciate hearing your comments.
I think it's acceptable.
Yeah, I would agree.
I think it makes it cleaner, you know.
Better.
More specific, you know, to the topic, and I like the idea.
Okay. Mr. Helmrick, what do you think?
It's a great idea since this is not technically a public hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll add that, too. Just public comment under 7A or an area for that, and I'll talk about that. Okay, good. I'll address it. Um. Anything else to add to the agenda? No. All right, we are going on to the minutes. Mr. DeFranco, good job on the minutes.
Do we need a motion on the agenda?
Yeah.
We sure do. We'll go through them. Is there? Oh, do we need a motion on what?
On the agenda.
Oh, you bet we do.
As amended.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes. I would so move.
Moved by Row?
Yes.
Seconded by?
I'll support.
Helmrick. Okay. And we will do a roll call vote. Row?
Yes.
Eily.
Yes.
DeFranco.
Yes.
Helmrick.
Yes, you skipped me.
I did?
Well, I second, I was the second. It's usually.
Moved by Row and seconded by Helmrick, sorry.
Yes.
Shipley.
Yes.
Welk, not here. Israel's, yes. Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. All right, so it's customary that we go through the minutes page by page. And I believe there's, how many pages? Fifteen? Sorry. No, it's great. It's a nice job. Okay, any additions or corrections to page one? Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. And page seven.
Well, the last paragraph. One, two, three, four sentences down, there is land use that looks like there was an S that was added and required.
I see it.
I'm sure by this point your hands were getting a little tired.
Yeah.
I had that, too. Okay. Anything else on page seven? Page eight? Page nine? Page 10? Page 11? Page 10, 12? Page 13? Page 14? Any other comments on the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I would move that we approve the minutes as amended from the October Planning Commission meeting.
I second that.
Moved by Row and seconded by Shipley. A roll call vote, please. Row.
Yes.
Eily.
Yes.
DeFranco.
Yes.
Helmrick.
Yes.
Shipley. Shipley.
Yes.
Israel's, yes. Welk. No, not with us. All right. Moving on to public comments. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to public comments. Is there anyone from the public here this evening?
Yes, we do have members of the public here. We have Mr. Bosscraft, Scott Bosscraft here, David Swan, Nick Curcio, Jim Brody, and Stacy Aldrich joining us.
Well, first of all, we'd like to thank all of you for joining us this evening. And is there any public comments that you would like to make at this time, at this point in our agenda?
This is David Swan. I'll hold my comments until we discuss the wellhead protection area. And will you be taking public comments before or after deliberation by Planning Commission?
We will be taking them before.
Just wanted to double check. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else?
Any other public comment?
At this time, we'll consider item five on the agenda, public comments closed. And we will move on to new business. Item A is the 2021 meeting dates and schedule. Linay, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, sure, commissioners. As typical, we like to set our schedule for upcoming Planning Commission meetings for the year. Included in that schedule, we also have submittal deadlines. And those submittal deadlines help provide predictability for applicants. They know that if they get a complete packet to our office, they can typically anticipate being on the agenda the following meeting after they submit that packet. So we just wanted the Planning Commission to have an opportunity to review those meeting dates. Typically, and as suggested, you'll continue to meet the fourth Monday of each month at 7:00 PM. We still have these occurring at the Township Hall, but we'll continue to be in Zoom mode until we feel it's safe to do otherwise. We do have the third Monday in May as a scheduled meeting. We typically move it to that date because of the Memorial Day holiday. And then in December, because of the just the holiday season in general, we move that meeting to the 13th. We can always cancel meetings if we don't have agenda items, but this way the township is able to post all of these meeting dates in the newspaper at one time and fulfill the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the schedule.
I have a question, Linay. So on the, on the schedule, it has January 19th. That's a Tuesday. Do you mean the 18th? And then also.
Oh, I realize I don't have 2021 on here. They should all be 21.
Oh, right. Isn't the 18th a holiday?
All right, so.
I think that's why it's Tuesday.
So first of all, I think what we should just clarify that we mean the fourth Monday of every month in 2021, except for May, which would be the third Monday, and December, which would be the second Monday. That could be your motion, and I'm sorry about that. I will change these dates. We would not meet on Tuesdays. No, we would meet on Mondays.
Sorry, Linay, could you repeat that? The fourth Monday of every month, except?
Yep. Except May would be the third Monday. And December would be the second Monday.
Thank you.
I fixed it all on my submission deadlines. I need to close my door more at the hall, I think. Okay, so that would be the motion if I could get that, please.
I'd move to, you know, create the meeting dates for being the the third Monday of every month, other than May and May being the third. Oh, no, did I say that right?
No.
Over. Yeah, yeah. So it's the fourth Monday of every month, other than May being the third Monday and December, the second Monday of the month.
In 2021.
In 2021.
Are we including a day set, as John had asked for the joint? Or is this completely different?
That will be item number C.
Okay.
This is an A, yeah.
This is the regular meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So he motioned, I, did you motion, Dave?
I did.
That motion, Dave.
Thank you.
We have a motion to move the meeting dates to the fourth Monday of every month in 2021, except for May, which will be the third Monday, and December, which will be the second Monday. Moved by Eily, supported by Shipley. Roll call vote for that, please, would be Row.
Yes.
And Eily.
Yes.
DeFranco.
Yes.
Helmrick.
Yes.
Shipley. Shipley.
Yes.
Israel's, yes. Welk. Absent. Hey, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Up next on the agenda is the updated fillable forms. And Linay.
I, I don't need any kind of motion. I just want you, as Planning Commission, to know that we are making great progress in updating our forms. Several of them had didn't even ask for email addresses. Some of them had referenced the previous staff members. We also removed references to fees on these forms, because if we were to update a fee schedule, then we would have to go and update the form. So we have a separate fee schedule and a separate form. Um. Our goal is to make these forms fillable in PDF so that somebody can, you know, create the PDF, save the digital copy, and then submit it in digital format. Little did we know, we'd need digital format as much as we do now. But they're still, I think, a work in progress, but I wanted to just get your thoughts on these and your comments. I see that, you know, we have the signature block. We have a lot of forms. We're also trying to consolidate some of these forms. So one of them, I think, in my memo, I said we have the zoning form, and we used to have a separate form for signage, for fencing, for pools, and for zoning in general. We've combined all of those and made it one form, and then you can check the box whether it's for one of those items. Um, and we also included comments from the Fire District, who wanted us to include things like email addresses in some of our forms, too, because they do all of their correspondence via email. And we didn't have addresses for applicants on, I think, the zoning form. So that's just an update item. If anyone has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions on the forms? The nice thing is they're all accessible on the website.
Yeah, yeah, they're all on the website.
Which is really helpful for anyone who wants to do business in our community, I think. I commend you. I mean, I think this was a lot of work, and I understand it's a work in progress. But it really is nice to have these things updated. And I know tonight we talked about a couple other things that we thought we would update on the website. You and I, and I think it was rules of procedure for planning.
Yeah.
Zoning. And so that will be good to get those done, too, at some point. Not that you have to do that right away, but I noticed one of them was done last time in 1994, so. You know, I just think you've made great strides for the community and for the township, and I really appreciate it, and I know everyone else does, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we're trying. So if anybody has any suggestion or changes, just feel free to email me. Um. So, yeah, I think that's it. Just kind of wanting to show you all of these signatures and a signature box and fillable forms, so. Pretty exciting.
Any comments from anyone else?
Excellent. I equated to my time at the doctor's office, going from paper file to electronic file. And I know it's a lot of work, so I appreciate it and thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a great addition. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Great. That's all I have for now.
Great. Well, don't leave us. All right, number, item number C is to set the date in January. John, do you want to talk a little more about that? Do you have something in mind?
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to offer three dates and just a little background. Some of you were at last Wednesday's board meeting, which I'll comment on more later. But it sort of became clear to the board that even though we have been postponing the quote annual joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Township Board due to COVID and being on Zoom, and we wanted it to be much more personal and allow public to be there physically. That's now gone on, what, eight months? And some issues came up at the board meeting. One example, we had 10 people at least that were there commenting on the suggestion about a historical commission. There were other items, and it just seemed to us that we can't wait. We've got to get together, have an agenda, and address some of these. I mean, some of these are new issues, the few older issues that probably need to be addressed relative to ordinance definitions, et cetera. So we, we, we all agreed that this, it's sooner is better than later. And I know it'll be difficult, and we may not get everybody from either body. But the feeling was, let's try to jump on this in January. My suggestion, because Planning Commission meets on Monday, as do the two cities, our board meets on a Wednesday, maybe we should meet on a Tuesday. So I would like to offer and get some feedback tonight. If we were to do this joint meeting via Zoom, if either January 5th, 12th, or 19th would work for my colleagues.
Okay, well, I think that we need everybody's input as to what they can do, so jump right in. I'm available, all three of them.
As am I.
What was the middle date again, John? It was the 5th, the 19th, and the?
12. Right, yeah.
5, 12, and 19.
Was that Denise that said yes, too? I'm sorry.
Becky said yes. Eily said yes.
I'm sorry. I am somehow trying to figure out how to get back to my screen. I've lost you all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have no idea how to get back to my screen. But anyway, um, yeah, I believe, I'm just checking my calendar. I believe all three also work for me, so.
I do, John, feel like the 5th may be a little soon after the holiday from.
I totally agree.
Prepared, yeah.
And I'm available, any of those three as well.
Excellent.
Daniel?
Daniel.
I agree with Linay about the 5th, and I am available the 12th or the 19th.
This is too easy.
I know. And what about you, Linay?
You know, I think then, I guess the 19th with the board being on the 13th, that it might be a lot for, I don't do the board packets, but I just think it could be a lot, so the 19th would be ideal. But, you know, I know we have other board members, too, that need to weigh in.
But you could do the 12th, perhaps?
I could do the 12th. The 5th, I'm really trying to take that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's soon.
Sounds like we took the 5th off the table.
Yeah. My pension is for the 12th because it is before the board meeting, but. Did we?
You have some insight into the board meeting. Will they be able to handle it, John?
Back to back.
I guess I'll find out. I wanted to take our temperature first, so I'll try to get responses tomorrow from the board.
Okay, John, well, it sounds like your options are the 12th or the 19th.
Yes, and I thank you. That was very quick and easier than I expected, so I will share with the board, and hopefully we can settle this still this week, so we can care planning for it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to old business. The zoning ordinance text and map amendment. It's consideration of an ordinance to add a new zoning section 40-595 to Chapter 40 of the Code of Ordinances, Township of Sagatuck, Michigan, and to amend Section 40-586 to establish and provide regulations for a groundwater protection overlay zone. And consideration of an ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezone various properties in the township to be part of the newly created groundwater protection overlay zone. I did add public comment to this section, and when Mr. Swan asked at what point would we take public comment, I did say at the beginning. And and hopefully this works, because, Mr. Swan, what I was hoping is that if you brought anything up, our speakers are this evening, Mr. Brody and our attorney, if he is here, could also comment on whatever you do bring up or anyone else brings up in a public comment. So first of all, I guess we'd like to take public comment on this.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will start my timer.
Okay, and would you like to recognize whoever would like to speak, because I don't have that information?
Oh, sure. David? Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, you're, the floor is yours, so I'll start the timer for three minutes, and then Scott, we'd be happy to allow you the same, all right? Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm David Swan. I live at 345 Griffith in Sagatuck. I'm the president of the Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance. Hopefully, all of you have had an opportunity to read the letter that we submitted to the Planning Commission through Griffin Graham. I wanted to clarify a number of points made at the October Planning Commission meeting made by Carl Gabriels, the attorney for North Shore, regarding the agreement between Sagatuck Township and North Shore of Sagatuck. And I won't, I won't belabor those. I detailed them pretty thoroughly in the letter. And what I do want to emphasize this evening is that Section D4 should not be deleted. This is the section regarding excavation. It should be clarified, and it should certainly be defensible, but excavation projects of a certain magnitude, accompanied with a de-watering process, should be prohibited, and that's quantifiable, and that's defensible. These projects have been proven to alter the flow of groundwater, and I've included hydrogeological modeling done by Doctors Anthony Kendall and Dave Heinman from Michigan State University. The threshold excavation should be about 3,000 tons. This is exactly what Section 637 that regulates sand dune mining operations within Michigan's critical dune boundary permits, because 3,000 tons is about the size of a standard, single-family resident basement and foundation. If there's a larger project for light industry, that could go to the ZVA. But excavation combined with de-watering, and I emphasize de-watering, anything that can really move and alter the hydrology of the groundwater should be prohibited from this area. So I encourage the planning commissioners working with your attorney to put back in Section D4. You can quantify this. You can make this very defensible and follow science and good public policy. That's it.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Scott, did you want to speak during this comment period? I think you're muted, Scott. Yes, we hear you.
I guess thank you for letting me speak this evening and I did look at your red line copy of the changes that you proposed. And I do agree with the changes. I think they represent good repair, good changes. I think David Swan is talking about groundwater. This was really a wellhead protection issue more than it was groundwater and the wellheads that we're talking about here, at least the area that you'd already drilled on our property is about 200 feet deep. And I don't see how any excavating that David Swan spoke about would have any effect on wellheads that are 200 feet deep. So I believe that the changes you've made are responsible and I think they're needed or they're needed by us and they're also needed by other neighbors by us. So I applaud the changes you made. I think you've listened. And I think everybody understands what's needed and and what's responsible. That was it.
Thank you, Scott. Madam Chair, those are the only public members of the public other than our speakers that I see on the call. I did want to note for the record that at seven thirty Ed Welk joined. So hi, Ed. We're happy to see you. So we want to make sure that's reflected in the minutes.
Hi, Ed. Okay.
I have a technical question.
Yes.
Are we still screen sharing from you or Lanay?
Um, do you see my screen?
No, it went away. I'm seeing all the people, but I've I lost the screen share.
I still have a screen share.
I still have the screen share, John.
John, do you have a Mac?
Yep.
You you see that you know that button at the top, it's on the same row as escape and you can press it and it shows you all your individual windows.
Me viewer?
It's the it's like three different rectangles.
Is it F two or F three? I mean?
Yeah, you might just have to change your desktop view you have because I had that problem before too.
That's weird. It just it just went away. I was fine. It's all it's. Sorry about this, but I'd kind of like to see the.
Right. Is there a refresh button that he could press?
I mean, should I go out and come back in?
You can.
Or maybe David, can you take a picture of the button?
I think I got it.
How'd you get it?
What did I do? I can't remember. Well, I'm seeing the ordinance. I believe that's probably where we're at and I can still see people. Thank you for sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. Zoom is difficult. And we want to make it as comfortable as possible, right? It's hard to do this. All right. Okay, so Mr. Welk has joined us now and welcome, Ed. And we have some guests who will be speaking this evening. That be Mr. Brody?
That's right.
I think it that you're on, sir.
Yeah.
Great. I'm gonna stop sharing mine and I'll let Jim share his.
Okay.
Well, so far it's not here.
That's okay. We we can we'll bear with you.
Here we are. Beautiful.
Great. Okay, well, thank you for for having me here tonight. Jim Brody, I'm a hydrogeologist. I I work with Cal Lake on the the wellhead protection program. I've been doing this kind of work for about 35 years and I work on a lot of wellhead protection programs for a lot of different communities and work on groundwater type projects, environmental type projects. I've done that my entire career. So that's a little bit of background on me. But I I want to give you a little background on the wellhead protection program that we have for Cal Lake. Um, start off. Cal Lake does have a mission statement. I don't know if if many of you have seen that, but it it really has it gets to the root of providing the safe water for the communities that that it supplies. And that was put in and and memorialized in their mission statement. And that really kind of dovetails well to the wellhead protection program that we work on because that's really what our goal is to. So Cal Lake began their wellhead protection work in 2000. There was a wellhead protection plan that was completed at that time. Cal Lake, you know, 2000 was a time when a lot of communities were really embracing wellhead protection in the state of Michigan. We there were just prior to that, some funding came out, funding mechanism that a grant system that the state came out with that really helped a lot of communities get on board with wellhead protection before that. Not too many communities were participating in the program. It's a voluntary program in the state of Michigan. It's not a mandatory program. Some states have mandatory wellhead protection and in Michigan we don't, but we have a a grant program that's really helped, like I said, help communities get the mon- the money that they need to 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 develop these important programs. So 2000 Cal Lake started that process. They got they completed a plan and implemented aspects of their plan and then revisited the plan in 2011 and worked on updating the plan that they had. And then again, we updated it in 2017. So that plan is on a current plan that 2017. It's usually recommended by the state that these plans get updated every five to six years. So so you really you're on target. You have a you have a relatively contemporary plan available. So what is what is what has this process that Cal Lake, this wellhead protection process accomplished? Some of the things that you've been able to accomplish is delineating all your wellhead protection areas. And I'll talk about what a delineation is in a bit. Um, but all the wellhead protection areas have been delineated. You've had many education outreach efforts, signage to to various ways that you've reached out to the community about the wellhead protection efforts you have. Uh, you've developed and adopted ordinances in Douglas and Sagatuck. And of course, you're you're looking at one and that's why we're here. Um, and then you've spent a lot of time, a lot of the more recent time that the community has spent has been related to investigating potential well sites. You have some aging wells and you are doing the prudent thing by looking for future well sites. They're very difficult to find these days and 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 looking for them makes a lot of sense. And you've really spent a lot of your effort in your wellhead protection efforts to look for look for new sites. So that's been really the past three years, we've really been focused on that. So a wellhead protection program is made up of seven elements, boring with all of them, but they basically we have the assigning roles and responsibilities. And these are all the elements that have to be completed to have a fulfilled full wellhead protection plan completed. So establishing roles and responsibilities is really kind of laying out who's responsible for what, who's implementing the plan and so forth. The wellhead protectionary delineation, okay, gets into somewhere a conversation tonight. That's a required element. You've done the community. When I say you collectively talking about your area in Cal Lake has completed delineations of all the wells in the system. Okay, then once you know where the groundwater has come from, you conducted a contaminant source inventory to look at where known and potential sources of contamination are in the wellhead protection areas. And you develop management strategies. So once you know where your water is coming from, the threats around, you can develop management strategies. And this ordinance that that you're talking about is a management type of management strategy. On contingency planning, you have to think about about what happens if you were to have a significant spill or one of your wells became contaminated, what you would do. Okay, so that's that. There's a plan in place for that. I talked about citing new wells. That's something that a wellhead protection program does is you look and try to figure out where your next well supplies is going to be, where water is coming from. And last but not least, education and outreach is something that you want to do. You want to educate your community about the value of groundwater in your case and and where it comes from and all that. Because that's just the prudent thing to do. So just a little bit about your your wells here. You have, you know, six wells that were were that are installed. The the missing three, as you could see, so you numbered one through one, two, four, five, six, seven. The wells are kind of old for the most part, you know, sixty three is is getting up there. So you're you're doing the right thing and looking for new water supply wells because these wells, you know, we we typically think of a community wise water supply wells in it lasts around 50 years plus or minus. But we have some that are 100 years. I worked on some and and others that don't quite make it to 50. So so anyway, but it's kind of a rule of thumb. But you have some older wells and you see how they range in depth from about, oh, what 94 to 216 or so feet. And these are the capacities that you have on them. You can see that the the best well seven is producing rated at 1,000 gallons per minute. And some of the other ones are less than generally in the three to 400 GPM range. So when you talk about a wellhead protection area, a wellhead protection area is really, there's a there's a there's a federal definition that you can read here. And there's also a state definition that we have. And these wellhead protection areas are delineated delineated by what we call a 10 year time of travel. And that basically, if you think of it this way, that within that wellhead protection area at the outer boundary of it, if you will, it if a particle of water there on by pumping your wells at a at a at their near their maximum flow rate, and we use that in our modeling. A particle of water in the outer edge of that wellhead protection area that you see will take about 10 years to get to your wells. So this is an area that the state of Michigan is deemed, you know, how they define wellhead protection areas. And and that's what when we delineate these areas, that's we use as a 10 year time of travel. That's not to say that, you know, protecting water 15 years or 20 years is not important. It's just these become geographically, usually a 10 year time time of travel to these wells becomes an area that's that's fairly manageable. And you get beyond that and it becomes a little bit more difficult to manage. So how do we delineate these wellhead protection areas? I know you had some 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 comments about that and and some concerns, you know, is there a scientific process? Is it just some, you know, buddy just drawing a circle? This is a fairly regimented process. I can tell you, it's it's it requires us to to gather information and have empirical information in order to do this pro- to to delineate these wellhead areas. We have to have aquifer test information and that comes from pumping wells and testing those wells and testing water level decline and mathematically deriving aquifer coefficients. So we have to have that data. We have to have measured groundwater flow information. So we have to know how groundwater is flowing around your wells. And then we have to have information regarding pumping. You know, the the each of your municipal wells pumps a certain amount of water. We have to, we have to analyze how much water you pump from those wells and that goes into how we calculate out these areas. We calculate them out using the average day of the max month. So we sort of a worst case conservative scenario where we look at the we assume or we look at the records for the past five years. We look at the average day of the maximum month, which is typically July or August, when your people are watering their lawns. And we calculate a wellhead protectionary based on that flow. We use standard modeling procedures. I say standard, but recognize modeling procedures to delineate these areas. Computer models, that's what I do as a hydrogeologist. That's my background. So I'm pretty familiar with groundwater flow and how it behaves. And so so I was involved in the delineation of your wells, six and seven. And their company was involved in some of the delineation of your other wells. So, but anyway, that's we we use a we use numerical models. We calculate out how groundwater behaves around the wells. And then we put all that into a report and it gets submitted to the state and the state reviews it and hopefully approves it. In your case, they approved your wellhead protection. So they look at the science, they look at the data we collected, how we did the modeling, whether our models are calibrated and so forth. So so it is a fairly laborious process. There's always uncertainties in these things. And it's this, you know, it's you can only reasonably investigate something and and get as you know, we get we get relatively accurate on these, you know. But there is there is, I have to admit, there's some level of uncertainty, but it's but it is a pretty rigorous process. So the wellhead protection areas that we've delineated for the community here are before you on this map. You you can see that the wellhead protection areas for the two wells, six and seven, that was the most recent one we did and really isn't a lot of the township. Extends a fairly big area. So remember what I said, the 10 year time of travel in these areas represents. So these are all delineated by a 10 year time of travel. A 10 year time of travel is is means that at the outer edge of these areas that you see pumping at that near your 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 high some higher flow rates for to pump at that conservative evaluation here, but it would take approximately 10 years for a water particle at that edge to make it to your wells. So does that mean that contamination will get if you have a if you have a leaky underground storage tank? And by the way, these dots that you see out here are known and potential sources of contamination that we've mapped in the community. So you can see that there's a fair amount of different sites out here. Not all these are high threat sites. They they're just on a list. And we were aware of them and we plot them. So you can see you've got stuff going on around your wells. Does it mean that if you were to release some contamination at the edge of this area that in 10 years would definitely make it to your wells? No. You know, if you were to release something, a contaminant of enough mass and enough mobility, it could possibly make it there in 10 years. And that's how we kind of think of this, you know, there are some contaminants that move very readily through the subsurface and some that don't move so readily. And and, you know, if we dumped a thimble full of gasoline out here, it's not going to make it to your wells in 10 years. If we dumped a tanker truck full of brine, it could possibly do make it there. So so that's how we kind of look at this. All right. So we also delineated this area here, for example, in a in a one, five and 10 year time of travel. So we kind of broke that 10 year time of travel down to some different time signatures or sign of time times. So we have a the the pinkish being a one year time of travel and the green being a five and then the 10 year time of travel shown. So, um, so this is just this helps us really kind of understand some, you know, some some little bit more detail about these areas. This just kind of shows how we can, you know, part of the delineation process, and I have a whole report on this delineation. If you if you want, if you're all at all interested in how this how this process works. We did a report on on the delineation. But, you know, we looked at groundwater flow. You see, you see these contours and then we've we've modeled this out. The groundwater flow. And then these are particle traces that you see this sort of spider spider looking object that though what we do is we simulate particles traveling reverse in time. And so we say, okay, let's let's start off at our wells and look at where the water came from in a 10 year time of travel. And that's what those particles are doing, reaching out as you see. And then we just the areas defined by the outer edge of that. So shift a little bit here to management strategies because this ordinance is, as I mentioned, a management strategy. And management strategies are something that we go over with the team and they they become part of our our planning. So there's there's sort of, there's two general categories of management strategies that we look at when we talk about wellhead protection, groundwater protection. One being a regulatory strategy, okay, and the other being a non regulatory strategy. So I provided some. And the other being a non regulatory strategy. So I provided some examples of regulatory and non regulatory strategies. And these are just from, you know, my experience and actually a source I found and we commonly use. But, you know. So typically, when we work with communities. A lot of them will want to, they'll have a mixed mixed approach of regulatory and non regulatory strategies. A lot of these we don't see too often. The one we see the most. Would be the ordinances or a lot of communities that in the state that have ordinances related to wellhead protection. I've worked on quite a few of those and our companies worked on quite a few. On the non regulatory side, we have, you know, things like best management practices or water conservation. Or household lands and waste collection, public education, things that, you know, aren't regulatory based, rather they're incentive based and and. And 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 a lot of communities rely a lot on the non regulatory strategies in their wellhead protection programs, including the Kellley. So that that's kind of a background. So just to, you know, there there was a desire here to develop an ordinance that was was. For the the community. We we looked at a couple of models and we came up, we had a model that we we shared, which was the one that became the basis for what Douglas and Sagatuck both developed. And became what was provided, you know, to you initially. There's nothing, you know, these are, these are, there's, there's nothing, I don't want to say magical. It's it was a this ordinance was, it contained a lot of language that is common in well and wellhead ordinances and other communities have used. But really, these become tools that are specific to your community and specific to your goals. And I just want to say that there's, you know, the when that model or when that ordinance was provided, it was just that it was a it was a template, if you will. And and it really, the the thing you need to do as a community, like Sagatuck did, like Douglas did and other communities before you. Is look at that and say, does this fit? Does this fit our, does this fit the lay of the land? Does it fit, you know, our our landscape, our community? You obviously are different than Sagatuck and Douglas in that the the wellhead protect, you've got a relatively large wellhead protection area. In a in a more rural area, it's a township, not a not a village or city. So so, you know, those are things you have to factor in. So, you know, it's it's really your decision to. To determine what fits in there and what doesn't. So I just want to, I want to make sure you're you're aware of that, that it's you it's your. What you think it really makes sense to you. And I know there's been some some comments about the the excavation and and and. You know, that that whole section that was in there and, you know, I I think I think. Eliminating excavation over a large geographic area is a pretty, pretty, maybe unrealistic thing here. Now, I know there's a comment earlier about, you know, that. This, the the one excavation you're looking at is fairly large, but excavation in general is a pretty low groundwater threat. You know, I look at, I look at other threats and and based on my experience and doing excavation, whether it be in the form of a, you know, a small excavation. For to even larger excavations are generally lower threats. You know, your your wells, six and seven are deeper wells. They're actually pretty protected. They're they're, they actually tested non detect or low for tritium, which actually made, which means that those wells derive their water from fairly old water sources. So they're, they don't get a lot of. It's an indicator that, take a step back here, I'm going to write too fast for you. Tritium samples, we we collect tritium in groundwater to to age groundwater. And and tritium was an atmospheric, when atmospheric testing was done in nuclear arms in the fifties, tritium was released. So if we test water for tritium and we have no or low tritium levels, it's an indicator that the water water being dry from the wells is is fairly old. Before nineteen fifty. So your your water, at least the last of the testing was done on six and seven. It was low and or non detecting tritium. So it's an indicator that's pretty old. It's an older water, less vulnerable water source. So there seems to be a disconnect to surface a little bit. That said, you know, the wild protection, like I said, is a pretty big area and includes the area that, you know, that the one area of the proposed excavation. I don't know exactly what's going on there, but it does include that area. But, you know, excavations are pretty. Low threat to 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 groundwater in general. But it has to be, you know, you evaluate on a case by case basis, but to, you know. Anyway, I may might be getting ahead of myself here. What what kind of questions can I help you with or might you have about what I've talked about?
I have a question going back to one of the maps that you had shown that identified some, it looked like they were, I think they were aquifers. So it was, or maybe it was where individual, not that, no, I think before that. Does that that identify different aquifers that? Or I should say it's different, like where wells are set and they're drawing from, like existing aquifers?
Yep, yep.
Then if they, sorry. If if they overlap, does that mean that there's different aquifers at different elevations?
No, that's a, that's a real good question. So here we have them overlapping. It really doesn't relate. In this case, we're not, it's it's not an aquifer dependent thing here. These aquifers can, and and I I'd have to go back and look at the geology and look at how these aquifers may be connected. But the the. The what these areas represent are different operating well clusters. So you have two wells here, two wells here and two wells down here. And these these areas are based on the conditions in the aquifers that these wells are completed in. So we we have testing data from each of these well clusters and our modeling is based on that. And we know that we have multiple aquer systems in this area. You know, and 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 how about how, you know, how these aquifers all relate is is it is a, this is a big question that. You know, I don't want to try to tackle here, but this does not, this doesn't mean that they're in different aquifers, the way that they're overlapping like this. It simply means that we, when we delineate this area and we delineate this area. Were we kind of, they were done in somewhat independent. And, you know, really, the 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 wellhead protection, you can almost call it a wellhead protectionary that is outlined by something like my cursor here. And this becomes really, it shouldn't be really separated out, but they were just done at different times. And and so we 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 kept this area that overlapped, but doesn't necessarily mean a different aquer or different level.
Okay.
The two areas is they just overlap and really you can almost, for all intensive purposes, consider this one larger wellhead protection area, you know. So.
The the reason that I asked that question is I know early on when we were discussing this wellhead protection area. One of the, one of the concerns I I think had more to do with with upper level groundwater contamination. And I I think that's kind of when we get into when we talk about. You know, moving some of this, the, you know, excavations and and things like that where we're concerned where. You know, you dig up some material, you you potentially, you know, get, you know, make the. Well, you make the ground deeper so that it's closer to a, say, said aquifer, you know, that that could, you know, lead to a pathway of of contamination. But it it doesn't sound to me like that's. You know, these are all fairly deep, I think.
Yeah, they're they're a little deeper and you, you know, you. You know, I know the excavation one seems to be a big one. When you excavate. You know, you you couple, well, one thing that happens is there's some water level adjustment, you know. You 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 have, if you if you were to put a, if a lake were to be put out in in an area, the groundwater adjusts to that lake elevation. Because you you imposed a flat surface on a sloped water table surface. So so you get an adjustment with that. So you can, you know, an excavation or the creation of a lake can alter water levels. You know, typically those alterations are more, you know, pronounced in the area of the the new lake or the excavation and not. They diminish away from that excavation. So. So so you can alter alter levels. You know, there's, there's sometimes some water chemistry changes with with, you know, developmental, especially developments of lakes, you know. I mean, I've worked on where. You've had, you know, a forty acre gravel, sand and gravel mine, you know, that's that's in that that this gets developed. And so you can, you can get in some water chemistry alterations as a result of that and get into some lake level adjustments or groundwater level adjustments. You know, here, here, you're you're dealing with some deeper, you know, a deeper aquer system. That is is separate from the surface. We know that because we have the tritium testing, you know, so it's a deeper flow system. You know, when we project that out anywhere in here, you know, when we're projecting out the, we know that that deeper aquer exists. It's hard to say throughout this entire area how it connects to the shallow aquifers that are present or the most upper water bearing zones. You know, it's 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 geology changes through here. We're talking about glacial deposits. And there's a lot of questions you get out to hear how that deep rock for relates to the shallow aquifer and so forth. So you have to kind of look at it on a case by case basis and try to figure that out. When we're mapping this out, we're kind of assuming that that deep rock for exists throughout this area. And the pumping, the characteristics that we have from that we drive from the this area here get projected out at a distance. You know, that's that's sort of an assumption in this, in these analyses and things can change in the landscape.
Thank you.
Mr. Brody? Yeah, first of all, thank you. This was, I think, a very helpful and easy to follow presentation, which I appreciate. So seeing the the overlay map here on the screen, it just dawned on me and I'm curious, a good portion of the area is actually in Lake Town Township. Have they adopted an ordinance? What's the status of that as a neighbor of ours?
No, they haven't. And I know that they have not been represented on the on the the wellhead team. Yeah, that would be something to talk to Daryl, but I know, I think he's been, there's been some outreach to them, but they they're not on the team. So. But you're right, some of this does go into Lake Town.
Yeah, it's just good. It's a good chunk. I mean, there aren't that many dots in it, but still. Part of it's the state park, but I was just curious. Thanks.
Yeah, that's the thing about these wellhead protection programs is that it's very rare that we have. We have a wellhead protection area that's in one political jurisdiction, you know, using their crossing boundaries. And it's a great opportunity for communities to work together for, you know, a common goal.
Right. Well, that was sort of the seat of us working with the two cities and, you know, they've adopted theirs, you know, a year or even two years ago. We're kind of, we're slow to the table, but.
Oh, you're doing the right thing. I, you know, I give you the whole community credit for for how you're, you've moved along in your wellhead protection efforts.
Well, thank you. Oh, I have a question on, you know, as part of this agenda item, we'll be looking at a red line version of the potential ordinance. And I just, process wise, were you involved with that step in terms of creating the red line that's different than what we saw a month ago or or not?
Yeah, 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 I was a little bit involved in that. Yep.
It it seems to me, if I can read minds here, it looks like maybe we are looking to adopt this ordinance. If I'm understanding correctly, we're really just kind of struggling with a section where we've changed or are being asked to change the language. And it's about the excavation. I guess I'm a little confused. At what point does it become excavation? I think that as I'm understanding it. It already allows for normal residential digging of homes. And so at what point does that, is it the tons being removed? I'm I'm trying, trying to gather some numbers together. Cubic feet. At what point does it become considered an excavation versus just digging for residential homes, say? Because it seems to me like that's where this question is. Is adopting the exact language. And I guess maybe if I understood the what the language was, what X. I mean, excavation. It seems like we're already okay to dig for houses. So what I guess is the huge concern is my question.
That's a, that's a good point. And I I think I would look at that that entire. Ordinance is a, there's something that it's, you're in the driver's seat on, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing in there that. Is set in stone. It's a, it was a template. That that we we brought to the communities and said, hey, this, it seems like a good fit. I mean, some of these ordinances are pretty, pretty comprehensive. You know, this one, this one was a reasonable balance. It's it's sort of, it has a lot of the key elements that a lot of these wellhead protection ordinances do. Said, here's a template and each community has kind of gone through that and and determined what's a fit for your community. And you and your your geography and your the demographics that your wellhead areas that you have are. The township is different than, you know, what Sagatuck and Douglas have. And so, you know, so to get to the root of your question, I mean, does does prohibiting excavation, you know, in a large area make sense? Or, you know, some, and I I I'd struggle to say that it does. You know, I think that. That, you know, I I really. You know, this, this is a big area to, I I look at excavation, that sort of process as being a pretty low threat. Now, you know, someone decided to put a sand and gravel mine right in the middle of your wellhead area, close to your wells. You know, you say, well, I don't know if that's a good fit, you know? I mean, that's because I can come up with reasons why, yeah, you know, you pull up, you have a, you create a big lake or like some of those things I talked about earlier. It might be, might be detrimental to your wells, but I, you know. For the most part, you know, trying to rule out excavation here seems to be pretty unrealistic. Even if, you know, I know the concern about some of the excavation over. You know, with the marina or whatever that was, I mean, it seems, I don't see a real threat to your wells based on that. But I I haven't looked at that specifically.
I think we also need to look at, once we allow this and we say excavating is okay. I mean, who would have thought this would, I mean, who would have thought around the corner from me would be this, you know, huge lake suddenly? And then who would have really thought twenty years later, living here, that we would have a new marina? I mean, those are things that we think this will never happen, you know what? And and yet here we are today. So I kind of tend to disagree. And I feel like the more protection currently until I understand more, and I appreciate your expertise in this. I'm just looking down the pipe like twenty years later from now. When we've said, okay, this is just because. A property owner, from what I'm understanding, I feel like we're getting a little bit of pushback. I'm going to be very honest with you. I feel like we're getting a little bit of pushback just to be settled by this because a property owner who does own quite a good portion of the property. Is 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 nervous, but I'm nervous for everybody. I'm nervous for everybody that this, now I'm looking on this map. I'm nervous for everybody. And I'm worried that if we get concerned about the language because we have one public comment. I I'm worried that we're going to be swayed by a public comment when we're, I feel like we need to protect the entire area covered in this blue map. And it's simply because of language. So that's why I'm really, really, really need to understand the language here. So I do appreciate what you're saying about the excavating, but with all due respect, I'm worried about the future because we didn't think this would be happening. And yet here we are. So well, thank you everyone for. Hearing me out. I appreciate it.
No, this is John. I want to. But is someone else talking? I don't, I can wait.
And this was Nick Kurcio. I was just going to say, if you if you'd like me to, I. And this was Nick Curcio. I was just going to say, if you, if you'd like me to, I, I do have some comments on this question about the language. But you can go ahead with yours.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's good. Why don't you go next? Because I was going to ask you about the language too. I just wanted to thank Denise for those comments and just, I mean, we all know this. Neither the city of Sagatuck or the city of Douglas will ever have an occurrence where someone wants to build a six acre water skiing pond. They don't have room for something like that. Nor a deep water harbor that I think is 1600 feet long for a hundred foot long yachts or greater. So we're in a unique position and I agree with the way you positioned it that we, we have to protect ourselves for the future and we've inherited some projects that were approved under previous administrations and we've got to be as careful as we can because we do have, what is it, 39 square miles? We got a lot of land here and a good portion, not all of it, but a good portion is in the wellhead protection circle here. So.
There are other areas. Unfortunately, there are other areas, given the current situation that people can, property owners can choose to do the same thing. There are other areas. And so I think that I, I would like to urge all, all of my fellow members to really consider this because we think it couldn't happen, but yet when you look at the, the properties now, it could happen again. It, it can be, it can, there is more than one area where a marina can be dug out. There are more areas where giant lakes can be dug out. It's not true that it can't, and, and it's because we are such a large, we're a large portion of the map. It can happen. So let us please be really cautious and talk about this language and make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons. Let's make sure we're doing it for the right reasons, please.
Yeah, and it's been noted and we're going to get into this now, and that's maybe when Mr. Curcio wants to speak to. When you look at the red line, it's basically only D four that was removed. And excavation is a broad term. I'm kind of intrigued by this notion of defining it better and maybe limiting, you know, putting in some dimensional limitations because the intention is not to have any impact on someone building a house and building a basement. That, that's one thing, but the water features that we're already grappling with potentially are much, much larger and have a hu, will have and have had a huge impact on our natural geography and the whole, I mean, and the economic welfare of our, of our township.
The dewatering, John, I think we need to talk about the dewatering also. I think this is, I think, I think it's worthy discussing.
Kind of feel, feel like we're talking about two different things here. I mean, because the question of this, isn't this, I mean, this is for groundwater wellhead protection. I, I don't think it's, we're putting this in place to limit development. I don't think that was the intent of it. But that's kind of what we keep coming back to and talking about is, is potential future developments that are, that could come into play and then using this as a tool to prevent those. And I, I believe that any of those projects that would come in front of us or any of those projects that were, that were, you know, came up as an idea and were, they would have to be presented and approved by the township. So, I mean, I, I'm not sure how, you know, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't believe that we should use this as a tool to, to limit future development.
I don't think anyone's suggesting that.
I don't think so either. I, I don't.
No, it's not about any prevention. It's about, it's about guiding and making, you know, having certain protections and definitions in place.
We keep talking about excavation.
Well, that's because that's the one thing that was changed. It kind of jumps out when there's red line and the whole paragraph was taken out in a few weeks after one person spoke up about it. And I'm just trying to learn more about the process because, you know, perhaps we overreacted in how fast that was done. And we're trying to just understand it. And maybe there's a different approach where it's more about, as I said, definitions and, and size issues and, and other things we, we're talking about.
I think I could interrupt for just a minute. I think that we should let Nick speak to the subject because he did say that he wished to speak to this and I think that now is the appropriate time.
Sure. Thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead. Now I'll start with the other two items on the red line that are probably the, a little bit less controversial, just so we can get those out of the way. So subsection one, I think previously it's that what struck out isn't shown on the red line for some reason, but I think it previously referred to, to, oh, I can't remember what the language was, but it was something other than a defined use in your zoning ordinance. We just changed it to junkyard and salvage yard because that's the term that's used throughout the zoning ordinance. So just to make it consistent, taking the city's draft and kind of applying the township language to it. So that's a very minor kind of cosmetic change. Subsection seven was also in response to some comments at last, the last meeting. Someone suggested that prohibitions on digging wells could potentially run afoul of the Right to Farm Act as applied to farms within the township. We did some research into that and that is most likely correct. So rather than just an outright prohibition on, on digging wells in this area, we've kind of made this narrower with, with Jim's guidance to, to really hit the, the wells, to limit the prohibition to wells that could potentially be a problem and in terms of interfering with existing municipal wells. So we have some kind of very specific language. They'd only be prohibited if they're located within a thousand feet. And if they're of a kind of large quantity withdrawal type of well, more smaller scale whale, wells would not be prohibited, even if they're relatively close to a municipal well. So that was just kind of some fine tuning of the, of the previous language that was in the draft that came to the planning commission last month, based on some comments that were raised during the hearing last month. So moving on to subsection four, I think it's important to note here that even the language that was struck was the second iteration of language that had been presented to the township. So when the, the draft that, that Jim originally prepared for the cities of, of Douglas and, and Sagatuck had kind of more general language about excavation for which a permit is needed. I think it was something, something to that effect. And some questions were raised whether that could, could be read. If it was read literally, it could be interpreted to mean, it would even prohibit just a building permit for digging the foundation of a house. And that's obviously not what, what anyone intended. I don't think that's how the cities of Sagatuck and Douglas are applying this ordinance. But, you know, literally that is what it meant. Or it could be read that way. So to address that concern, we started looking as a staff, looking specifically what types of permits are we really talking about? We're not talking about building permits. So we've got to find kind of a list of permits that, that kind of cover these types of large scale excavations. So kind of digging through the Natural Resources Protection Act, we came up with a list that included part 301, which is the large kind of inland lakes. They're sometimes referred to as pond permits, but they're basically ponds that are, that are more than five acres is my understanding. And then excavation for certain types of minerals. And Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's, the categories are ferrous minerals.
Right.
Non-ferrous minerals and then sand and gravel mining. Are those the, the 600 chapter permits? I, I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Six thirty-one, six thirty-two and six thirty-seven.
I don't, yeah, necessarily sand and gravel mining, but ferrous minerals and other metallic minerals, I believe. So I have to look back and I have it.
Right. So I believe that thirty-seven will cover sand and gravel if it's being done for commercial purposes, in my memory. But, but anyway, we were getting into some very technical, kind of diving into the, the technicalities of these various acts and talking with Jim about what the, the threat levels really are with these, trying to figure out which ones to include in the list, which ones not to include. And in the process of that, Jim told staff what he, what he has told the planning commission tonight, which is that the threat here is very, really very low as compared to some of the other things that this ordinance is intended to address. And given sort of the headache of, of digging through these technicalities, given the fact that state law protects from a zoning perspective, some of these mining uses. I, I think several members of the planning commission, and actually maybe members of this particular commission were not around last time there was a sand mining request for a special use approval. But we kind of went through with, with the planning commission, there's different legal standards for, for gravel extraction than basically for any other type of use in Michigan. Because the legislature has determined that it's a, it's a use that gets protected status under zoning law. It, that you can still zone it. You can still prohibit it in certain parts of your jurisdiction, but it's a higher standard than just the kind of rational basis test that's applied to most zoning ordinances. So all that to say, the regulations on, on mining are subject to kind of higher scrutiny in court. And then we also had questions about how this interacts with the existing 2017 agreement where the township in 2022 will have the right to purchase a existing, non-existing, a prospective well site. It's already been explored by Cow Lake, identified by Cow Lake as a, as a fairly promising wellhead site. And this is on the North Shore's property. So all, all these kind of legal questions were swirling around about, about this provision. And then just speaking with Jim about how big of a priority is this really in terms of wellhead protection? And he essentially said it's fairly low for some of these other things. It was just staff's recommendation. It would essentially be easier and cleaner to take this, this provision out altogether. So that was ultimately the recommendation that made it into this packet. All that is to say, it's, we're perfectly happy to put language back in if the planning commission thinks that's more appropriate. Some suggestions were made about tying it to tonnage removed. I think that's a workable concept. Obviously tying it to specific types of state permits is a workable concept. But, you know, it, it does, you, you are going to have to get into the weeds a little bit to figure out how to do that appropriately. Something like the language that was in the last packet was probably workable, but again, we heard, heard some objections to that language and we need to, to work through and consider, consider those, especially given what Jim said about the extraction, you know, towards the surface tends not to, to cause groundwater problems, especially when the wells are deep. And one thing I, I do really want the planning commission to, to keep in mind is that anything that's in this, the prohibitions in this ordinance really do need to be tied to protection of, of groundwater. That's the stated justification. Protection of, of well water in particular at these, at these existing and future well sites and not, you know, this, this can't be used to, to address certain types of land uses that the planning commission may think are appropriate or inappropriate for, for other reasons. It's, it's perfectly legitimate for the planning commission to talk about some of these types of development uses, but that's probably better done through amending your special land use standards, amending your special land use map, you know, some potential types of changes outside of this ordinance would, would be maybe better venues for some of that type of things that's, that's being discussed. Another thing I would say is, is Jim mentioned, you know, if you were to have a large landmine that would, sorry, not landmine, a large sand mine or gravel mine being proposed next to a existing municipal wellhead site. That may not be particularly good or appropriate, but I think your existing special use standards would already allow you to address that. Where the planning commission is looking at, you know, compatibility with, with adjacent uses. I, I believe if that, an application like that were to come to the, to the planning commission, you could use your existing standards to, to, you know, to prohibit that, to say that's not appropriate, given the potential impact on, on a wellhead site. So that's, that's not to, to push you one way or the other as a planning commissioner, just trying to explain where we were coming from as a staff in terms of the recommendation. And happy to answer any questions or kind of help you to tailor language to put back in to the subsection four, if that's what you think is most appropriate.
Clarify the last point you made. Do you think that the township has the ability to, or, or for sure the township would at that point have the ability to set?
For an adjacent, so if a proposed, large scale proposed gravel miner, sand mine were being proposed to put, you know, on a partial adjacent or very, or very close to an existing well site. I think it would be appropriate for the planning commission to, to deny that application based on the compatibility standard of your special use permit, of your, of your special approval use ordinance. That, that would be defensible, I believe, if, if developer were to challenge that.
Um, I have a question for Jim, and I think it's also relevant for Nick. Jim, have you ever seen these ordinances being legally scrutinized, like taken to court, especially for this extraction element? And I, I just say that because when we put in, or when it was put in for part six three one, part six three two, part six three seven into our ordinance, I, I just, I, it strikes me as I, I'm, they're all pertaining to mining and I'm, I just don't know if there's, I mean legally, I don't know if, if those parts of the environmental protection law have precedence over the Michigan zoning enabling law?
Right, yeah. That's a great question. I have, I have not seen one challenged, but that is sort of a, I, I think you can, you know, we have in here the solid waste landfills. For one, you have the drilling of natural gas. Those, those are regulated as we know by the, the state of Michigan. And then I think you'd have an uphill battle if, if you had an oil and gas driller that wanted to put a, some oil and gas well and or do, do some, do some exploratory testing right next to one of your wells. Matter of fact, we had that at Battle Creek. And we didn't have an ordinance in place at the time, but in Battle Creek, we, we know they wanted to go right close to the, the Bronwell field in Battle Creek. And, and the community couldn't stop them. They basically, you know, I mean, it's, it's regulated at the state level. And so, so there's a question here, to your point, there's a question here, just how far this ordinance would go if someone decided they want to put a landfill in your, in your area and the state was, that was being evaluated and, and permitted by the state. So I, I think you, you it, it could, you could get into a, you know, an interesting situation where you have a local ordinance that prohibits, prohibits that, but it's the state that really permits it. So, yeah, it's, it's, you know, Nick might have some other thoughts on that, but you, you might be stretching some of these things and when it really push comes to shove in terms of your ability to stop them. But it's, I, I think, I think most have looked at it like, hey, it's another level of protection that people have to go through. And, you know, they want to have that local, local control to the extent they can through some ordinance to prohibit some of these things, but yeah, good question though.
Yeah, I just want to pay you back on, on that a little bit. And I kind of spoke to this a little bit earlier. So these uses really are protected by, by state law. That's not to say that local authority is totally removed, but you have to have, basically have to have a really good reason to regulate and prohibit some of these natural, natural resource, extraction of these natural resources. And that's kind of where this recommendation with subsection four came. You'll notice that subsection eight is also about the extraction of natural resources. That's another area that where state law is very protective of the use. The, the threat to groundwater of, of natural gas and petroleum exploration, according to Jim, is significantly higher. So we left that one in knowing that you're potentially heading to, to a legal battle if anyone found oil in the ground in Sagatuck and really wanted to dig it. But, you know, because that's the threat that's posed by that is greater. I thought of the staff that kind of, to strike the balance, we'd keep that prohibition in, in terms of this area because it has a greater potential threat and, and take the other, the other prohibition out because the, the threat is less and you, you have the same legal difficulties. There definitely are challenges, there have been challenges to local regulation of extraction. There's not that many that, that trickle up to the court of appeals to where you get published decisions. But I, I definitely know that there's been circuit court cases around the state in recent years and probably throughout the history of mineral extraction. And I think that's why the statutory, statutory scheme has kind of evolved the way that it has. This is definitely a fairly heavily litigated area as land use goes, because there's a lot of money to be made. There's a lot of externalities on, on neighboring property owners. It's just an area where, that tends to result in. It's just a an area where uh that ti- tends to result in. Um in in court action perhaps more than some other types of uses. So that there is some some reason to to think carefully about about what you want to do with these provisions. And and how much benefit you would get out of them and that type of thing. Is that, does that make sense?
Perfect sense. And and Jim, with the uh with the passage of this ordinance, or or maybe it's just membership into the um. The wellhead protection program, there is a, there is a higher level of environmental scrutiny that that comes with certain land uses and activities. Within the wellhead protection area, is that correct?
Correct. Yep, yeah, yeah, from a site plan review standard. And that's something you need to think about, you know, that language and how it fits into what you're currently doing. And but yeah, there's a, there's a higher level of scrutiny. That's really the the intent here. I mean, really, you are looking for the community to recognize the existence of this area. Like you are the value that you do, you have this area, you know where your water comes from. So when you're making decisions in the future, that your um your your GIS flags that, hey, this this uh. Site that we're talking about is in a wellhead protection area and and we need to think about it from that standpoint, too. That's that's really what you're trying to accomplish.
And it gives us the ability to hire and rely on other experts for projects that are within this area.
Jim, are we already part of the wellhead protection program? Or would creating this ordinance make us part of that program? Or is there additional steps we need to take to become part of the the state wellhead protection program?
Well, you you're part of a um, the you're part of the team. There's a wellhead protection team that the community has, and your 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 township's represented very well on that team. And always has been for my, at least as part as long as I've been involved. So you've been very active with it. Um so, um, you know, the state, the the Cal Lake has received grant funds to. Develop this ordinance um and and because you're you're made up of, that you're kind of unique, where you have a water authority here. Um and you have, as we've talked about, the wellhead protection areas exist in different political jurisdictions. So so the the um, the the Douglas and Sawituck have already adopted the ord- ordinance. And and looking for for um the township to do so also. Um so there's really, there's not a necessarily a state requirement for you to do this. It's strongly encouraged that you have strategies like this in place. So um, you know, if you if you if you didn't do this ordinance in the end, uh you know, um. It's, you know, again, it's not a required thing, but it's it's, you know, there is a, there is a something to be said about having continuity. This this ordinance generally mimics the 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 other communities ordinances. So it kind of from an administrative standpoint and thinking about these ordinances. For everybody that's being supplied by the water to have a a similar ordinance to be working from, this makes sense. So um.
Yeah, I know, it really does. And I have one very specific question that you may not know. Um so with the grant opportunities from the wellhead protection program. Um I know that there, it it looks like there's grant money um for um an educational component concerning household hazardous waste. And we have a newly formed tri-community recycling committee um that is thinking about household hazardous waste. And possibly putting together a household hazardous waste collection. Um and I don't know, I I I put in a call to the wellhead protection program, and I haven't heard back yet. But I didn't know if you knew if there was specific funding allocated for household hazardous waste collection events.
Uh no, they're they're, well, I mean, I mean, so this grant has been available since the the late nineties. And it's been available every year to communities um since then. With COVID, this last year, they decided not to grant, provide to to fund the grant. So there's currently no grant for your community or any others. But we fully anticipate that the next grant will, they're 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 gonna, they're gonna fund the grant program again. And their grant applications go in in June um typically. And then they wo- work on the state fiscal cycle, so from from October to the end of September. Um but something like household hazardous waste is a great um uh. Non-regulatory strategy that keeps tons of materials out of, out of these wellhead protection areas. They really, they're amazing how much it um get collected at those. So we're um, I would encourage you to uh talk um to Daryl Van Dyke. Who who's leading that charge and see how some of those funds might be able to be used for. Um, you know, has households has waste or advertising it, because it certainly ties into wellhead protection. So, you know, that's something to bring up to the team. Griffin's on the team, you know, to bring up to the team and and um and and push that forward. Because it 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 blends right in with this really well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and it's a fifty fifty grant, so um it's a pretty nice grant. So whatever the community um, uh you know, community has to put in fifty percent. So um and you you can apply for, um, there's a certain level based on the size of your community. And and uh how how many wells you have, that's how it's determined.
I have a question for Nick. It's John here. Um you made reference earlier to the uh the agreement between um. The Padno's family, or I guess the owners and the township relative to the uh selling of a wellsite for a dollar.
Yes.
That. I, I mean, I read it today. Thank you for sending it out, because I don't think any of us have ever seen this document before. So is it pertinent now to ask questions about that specific agreement, or should that be set aside?
Um.
To this discussion, sorry.
I don't know if that it's that's that important. I mean, it wa- it was raised at the the last meeting by the property owner's a- attorney. As it was suggested that it was kind of inconsistent with that agreement to prohibit excavation. That ultimately wasn't a a big driver or even a driver at all of staff's recommendation. But if you if you have questions, we'd be be happy to 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 answer those. And or maybe that's more appropriate for township board if the recommendation passes here. And township board has some qu- questions about interaction with that agreement. Uh but, you know, I'm happy to answer them if you if you have them.
Well, I only have a couple, so I guess I will, since I'm on the board. And as I said, I don't think any of the current regime ever saw this document or or we knew of the concept. So again, that's pretty, that's pertinent. Um, I'm assuming, which one should never do, that a a version of this exists that was fully executed. It has da- a date and signatures?
Yes, I believe so. We were scrambling to come up with it today. I think Griffin was out of the office because of COVID. But yeah, we know it was approved by township board. I I, as far as I know, it was signed. I'm not involved in the signing, but I know it was.
I know. Well, I think we should do some digging on that.
Right.
Because this is not an executed version.
Right.
And it's, having said that, because there's no effective date, I'm going by the date of the resolution, which was October fourth, I think, of two thousand seventeen. So if I'm reading this right, the term on page two, uh, the term was thirty months from October fourth of two thousand seventeen.
For the option, the option was exercised. So the the closing is supposed to happen between two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
But do you know when that option and was it prior to November?
Was exercised pretty shortly after the agreement was approved. They did the the uh the test drilling and it came back that it was a viable wellsite. And I think within a couple of months.
That was my next question. Did the test drilling ever hap- or testing?
Yeah, test drilling happened. It was successful. They found found groundwater.
No, that's helpful. I mean, it'd be nice to get that documentation at some point, which I know maybe somewhere in the township archives. But.
It could be, yes.
Because it initially struck me that thirty months would have expired in April of twenty twenty twenty. So that's helpful, and I think, let's see. Yeah, those are my specific questions on the agreement, so thanks for taking that time. Oh, and I did want to throw out and aside, since we're in tax season, um if anyone's interested. The parcel in question, which is listed in exhibit one of the agreement. The uh the total taxes due on that property this tax year were just over almost twenty one hundred dollars. So we'd have, the board would have to consider that, because there'd have to be a budget amendment or at least a budgeting process to. Uh. Cover that tax payment. Right now, the township only pays taxes, I think, on one small parcel. It's like twenty seven dollars. But this would be more like twenty one hundred dollars, just as a, as an FYI to everybody. Thank you.
Nick, I had a, just a few questions about it, too. I mean, it was kind of a headache reading. I I mean, I, a lot of it was just over my head. Uh but um, under conditions of termination. Um, all the conditions seem to me to be conditions pertaining to the township and not the property owner. Um so I don't know if it's just part of like, uh you know, just, you know, um, just general knowledge. That, you know, the owner can uh terminate the contract at any point in time. Are there conditions that I just missed built in where or under which the owner can legally um terminate the contract?
Hmm, if this, I negotiated this thing like four years ago. Hold on just a second, let me. What paragraph are you referring to? Conditions of.
I have to pull it up. Yeah, there's a whole section that says conditions of termination, and they're all the conditions or conditions in which the the township would terminate the contract. But there's not a single condition in which North Shore would or the owners would terminate the contract. So I was wondering if there were any conditions under which the owner would terminate the contract.
So I think that what you're referring to, and I'm not going to stand through it now to to take up, take up your time. But I I think what you're referring to is conditions where the township would terminate the contract rather than exercising the option. The ba- the main one being if they didn't find viable groundwater. Um, now that the option has been exercised, the the owner is under under contract to sell us the land. It's like if you have a contract to purchase a house, they basically have to sell it to you unless you were to breach the contract. Um and that, you know, could potentially include breach of what's called the implied covenant of good faith. I think that's kind of what the owners was was alluding to, that if we were to uh remove their ability to stage sand on the site. Then the then we're not, you're not doing what we said we were going to do either expressly or by implication when we entered into this agreement. Right, I I don't, yeah, I I don't necessarily want to get into whether that i- is or isn't the case. Again, that wasn't the driver of the decision on the on the recommendation, but I think that's what was being alluded to at the at the last.
Not on the table right now, anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Clarifies things.
No. Uh Nick, is there any, I mean, do you, do you feel that we're fine with eliminating number four? That we can still, on a case by case basis, if someone wanted to sand mine, actually mine sand. We could look at that. I mean, our our ordinance basically says they can't. Within a thousand feet, et cetera, of the wellhead, correct? Are we pretty safe in eliminating number four? Is that a recommendation, or would you recommend that we change that?
Your ordinance would not specifically say a thousand feet. That would, that is for the drilling of wells. What what I had said earlier was that if you had a proposed mine immediately adjacent to a well. You could, you could rely on your existing um special use standards to deny that application. Again, it may be challenged. Um, these types of denials just are frequently challenged in court. It's just how kind of goes with the with these uses. But I think that it's a, that's a defensible reason to deny a sandmine under your existing ordinance. But it's very limited to it being adjacent to a, to a uh, to a wellsite. You, sandmines are allowed in the township. State law basically protects them. And and you can't outright prohibit sandmines everywhere in a township. Um.
No.
So that. You you have some controls on them, but you don't, the you can't entirely control them under your existing regime. Or or if this were put in place, frankly, either, you know, this would be subject to the those same types of of challenges. And and when I say this, I mean the original language that did prohibit them by prohibiting um anything that required a a part. Um six thirty-seven permit. If if you wanted to to go to the thousand foot, um, the the thousand foot route. That's, that would be an option. We talked earlier about putting the language back in with maybe some new conditions. That's something you could could look at. You could say if these certain types of permits are required, and if it's within a thousand feet of a of a wellsite. That, you know, that that would be a viable option. But currently, the the, you know, the recommendation based on on Jim's analysis and these various legal considerations. Is to to take it out, because the headache may not be worth the benefit essentially.
Yes, okay, I understand. I agree.
The headache being what?
Uh uh being the potential legal challenges. Um, the 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 effort to figure out kind of which permits should be included versus which ones shouldn't be be included. Um, a- all of these, the kind of the difficulties of this conversation, the technicalities of the conversation that we're having. As compared to the the benefit of having a provision like this in the ordinance. Um, the planning commission might determine it's it's worth striking that that balance. And and really putting time and effort into doing that and and potentially being willing to go to court to to defend it. Or you, you, you're playing, planning commission might determine that it's it's easier and 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 better. Um, just to 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 cut the provision uh like the recommendation. It's it's, it really is up to the planning commission and ultimately the township board. We're happy to help you try to tailor the language. Um but the, you know, staff recommendation in this packet was was to just to strike that language.
I would love to have had some more public comment weigh in. I guess I'm stuck on just one. Or it's just not about one small piece of the blue area. I just, I kind of wished I'd had more public comment. But that, given as it is, I think this could go either way. I think that there are provisions for taking it out and then letting it, people get permission um to excavate. And I feel like it's appropriate to keep it in and then, you know, getting permission the other way. I I think that both ways are appropriate, and I just want to make sure we're choosing the proper language for the proper reasons. Um. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I have a process question, since we're looking at basically, you know. A very modestly revised version of an ordinance that's been presented previously in public hearing, I believe. Does it not require public hearing, formal public hearing again, because there's been changes made?
No, the changes like this wouldn't require a new new public hearing. A and, you know, it's still, the the requirement is that an ordinance um have a public hearing. This is still well within the the bounds of what is the ordinance that was considered last time. You you're free to make changes based on public input. It would be an endless cycle of public hearings if you. If you had to do one every time th- things were changed. Um so from a, from a legal standpoint, you're you're fine. If you think more public comment is needed, you're certainly f- free to to schedule a new public hearing. You can always do that, but but legally, there's no, there's no procedural issue with.
Well, thanks for clarifying that.
I guess I'm just feeling very pressured.
Well.
To understand.
We haven't been rushing this until now. We're almost there, so.
I know.
And I'm just gonna say, um, and people jump in if you agree or don't agree. But I personally, I'd like us to take a little more time. And maybe explore some of the things Nick has suggested that could be done with section D four. You know, relative to the thousand footer dimensions or or referencing state permitting. Um, yeah, I know this could go on ad nauseam, and that's not my intention here. I'm just, I feel a little awkward removing it altogether.
I I agree. I agree. I feel awkward both ways.
Yeah.
But I feel more awkward completely removing it. And so for that reason, I um, just completely, there's a reason it was written in there in the first place. And I'm trying to wrap my head around why suddenly we're just completely removing it versus tweaking it a bit. Um, so I I'm kind of with you, John. As much as I really think this is extremely important. That we adopt an ordinance and get on board with the entire Michigan um state that's doing this. Um, I think it's important that we are in a group together with Sawituck, Douglas.
Right.
Michigan, I hope Lake Town um starts to look at it also. I think it's all super important. Um, I just, while suddenly I'm at a nitty gritty of looking over language, and I appreciate everybody's input. So thank you for showing up to help us out with this. Um. Wow, thanks.
Jim, I have a quick question, and you may be more familiar with the city of Sawituck zoning ordinance. But do they even al- allow?
But do they even al- allow mining and excavation? Do you think this item number four was included because they don't have a special land use process to handle those types of uses?
I, I don't, I don't know what, what there's, how the zoning ordinance is set up with regard to those uses. I think just kind of practically, it's less likely that they'll be getting those types of applications in the township. Um, just through the nature.
In the cities.
Side of the town. Yeah, in the cities, it's just, I, I'm sure probably more commercial, his own property and things like that. Um, smaller parcels, the, the types of things that just make it less likely that that would, that would occur. And, and again, the language in the town, in the city's ordinances did not go into the specifics of which permits. It just kind of had that general.
It did, right. Which said that require a permit.
Right. And it was kind of when we realized that that language was kind of vague and suggested you couldn't even build a house and started digging into the specifics that the specifics kind of overwhelmed as a, as a staff and made it really difficult to choose what goes in and what goes out. And that's kind of why we're, why we're here having this conversation, I think. So as we dig into it, it got more and more complicated. But that being said, we're happy to go back into the weeds and, um, and come up with some distancing and maybe tonnage options. Um, if that's something that you feel more comfortable with as opposed to just cutting this, this altogether. And, and as for timing, I don't think you should feel pressured. I, Jim can speak to this, but I don't think there's any ru- ru- rush. I don't, I don't think that Cow Lake is telling us we have to get this done immediately. It's just something that they've, they've kind of asked us to do.
Sure.
At the partner and the, on the wild protection team, and we can take the time it needs to get it done correctly.
I, I have one more question. I have a note, um, myself here that said, um, Lucia DeFranco suggested in addition to section E about testing for contaminants. Have we discussed that at all?
Oh yeah, I was curious about that too. So it pertained to bringing soil onto a site, like offsite soil um onto a property. So I, I was thinking about it because um I live across the street from a sand mining site and they're in the process of clay lining the pond. Um, and we went through them to see if they could, you know, independently test that soil for contaminants just because they removed so much of the soil um and got close to the aquifer. So we were concerned whether or not those contaminants would leak into the aquifer. So like especially when we're talking about the potential for, for excavating a pond. Um, I imagine that, you know, not the, you know, you know, someone may want to excavate a pond in an area that's not within that North Shore area. Um, and that the aquifer or, or they might get, you know, closer to the aquifer, or the aquifer might be closer to um, the surface than in the North Shore area. And that if they did bring can, you know, clay onto the property to, to line that pond, those contaminants could potentially leak into the aquifer. I mean, I don't know if this is something that Jim can speak to, but the idea of, of saying if you're going to bring, you know, large quantities of soil onto a property from offsite, there maybe should be some sort of mechanism in place where we test those, that soil for contamination?
Um, well, you know, you typically, you typically would not see that in a, it is, it's, it's, it's a, you, you mentioned lining that, that pond in a Santa Gravla operation. That's not typically done. Usually their operations involve digging into the water table and the lakes created and there's no need to do that line. But they, you know, they're, certainly, you know, there, there can be those situations. But that, you know, those kind of situations occur all the time where materials transferred from, you know, to fill in an area or, um, uh, you know, from one site to another. And um, part two oh one, which is our general, uh, which is our, our, our cleanup law, if you will, non-petroleum based cleanup law that we, um, that regulates like um management of contaminant, contaminated sites. Certainly, it doesn't, people cannot create a contaminated site. People can't bring contaminated material in and, and, uh, and, and put it someplace, uh, you know, put it someplace else. Or they, if they know it's contaminated, the pro- the work becomes a kind of an interesting ques- so, so yeah, so they would be liable. I mean, if, if I want to take my material over here and bring it into the township and fill in a hole or whatever and it was contaminated, I would be on the, the hook for, for doing that. You know, I did, I can't, I can't create a facility which is a contaminated site. So, but you know, what ha- what happens is it's really, it, what, um, you know, people fill in holes with material that they're not testing, you know? I mean, that, that happens all the time. It just doesn't, there's not a re- requirement that somebody necessarily tests that material um, before it, it gets put into a, into a, um, you know, taken to a site. So we don't, um, you know, in ordinance like this, uh, it would get pretty difficult to manage some. I can't imagine just the, the, the ability, you know, the, 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 um, it would take a lot of work to just manage something like that because people are moving stuff all the time. And what level do you, you know, how much material and so forth? So, I don't know. Um, I've never seen anything like that in a, in an ordinance where um material has to be tested. You have in the township, just, I think you all know, or if you don't know, should be aware that you have a requirement that for the testing of, of groundwater of, of wells that are, um, I think at a point of sale for you test for volatile organic compounds. Which is pretty unique. I mean, it's, it's a pretty unique thing that your township does. Uh, it has quite a database of, of uh water quality samples as a result. So, but, but yeah, I haven't seen anything like that with the soil. I just, I just, the logistics of managing that would be really difficult. Yeah, I mean, I suppose on a, on a site specific basis or, you know, on a site plan review and working with um, somebody that's planning on doing a lot of filling, you know, to require them to test that, that material before it comes onto the site on, you know, that, that's a possibility of doing it that way. I, I don't see it as part of an ordinance like this.
Fair enough. Um, all right, so it's kind of questionable where we go from here. It sounds like that, um, some people are not quite ready to make a decision. And um possibly we need a recommendation from Nick based on everything we've heard tonight. I think that our biggest, even if, as a planning commission, we don't want to prohibit uh development and, um, and yet we want to make sure, you know, that we have a well protected water and aquifer. And, um, I don't think we're ready to make a decision tonight on this. Do you? I don't know where you want to go with this tonight.
I guess you could ask for a motion from, from a member, you know, whether it's a recommendation to approve this as presented to the township board. It, it could be a motion to direct staff in a certain way. You know, a lot's been discussed, um, and your, your seven members. So, um, it's really up to, to the members.
Like to say anything before I do ask for a motion on this?
Anybody?
Anybody yet that hasn't spoken? And then go ahead, Daniel.
Um, if, if we do, um, hold off, um, Nick, would it be possible to look a little more into the Michigan and zoning enabling act? And, and whether or not, um, some of these, um, measures that we have would, would conflict with that? Because I, I would just hate to put a ton of time into something and then it be easily overturned. Um, or it could be easily, um, challenged in the courts. Um, you know, especially because I think, you know, I like that you pointed out that you included, um, you know, oil and gas extraction. And that is, you know, substantially more threatening to the quality of groundwater. Um, but I would hate to put in a lot of time into something that, you know, we find out can just be overturned in the courts, you know, like that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've, I've done the research already. These things aren't fully fleshed out. And that, we, we have statutory language that's clearly intended to be more protect of these uses and some other uses. There's maybe a case here or there that, that apply that, um, a little bit. But it's, it's pretty difficult to say on a case by case basis, wh- what's going to be struck down. I think that the goal of protecting, um, of protecting well sites is a, is a important governmental interest. And I think that gives an ordinance like this a pretty good chance of, of surviving as, as compared to some oth- some other rationales that have been used for these types of prohibitions. But there's no case that specifically, you know, held that one way or the other. This is, all this is a bit of a gray area where, where, uh, uh, but someone who's wanting to mine has some statutory language that they'll, you know, cling on to and, and a, a, a certain court. So I don't think we're gonna get a better understanding of, of that through research. I do think what we could get a better understanding of, not necessarily through research, just by talking with Jim more, is wh- wh- what, what is the proximity or what is the size of a mine where it starts to be more of a threat? You know, is it a thousand feet? Is it five hundred feet? I, I have no idea what that is personally. I think that's something that we could probably, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's something we could probably do some homework on and come up with recommendations if that's something the board would be more comfortable with.
Well, and my question to that too is if it's, if we start saying, well, if it's five hundred feet or a thousand feet, um, is that in relation to the aquifer?
I mean, you can write it however you would want. I would think it would make the most sense to have it in the relation to the, to the wellsite. Maybe even like the center of the, of the well.
Okay.
That's something we could give some thought to. Uh, distances are often, s- spacing regulations are often done from parcel lines, but that probably doesn't make the most sense with the well because it could be in the middle of a fairly large parcel. Um, or a smaller parcel. I, I would think you'd probably want to do it from the, the dead center of the well. But that's something, you know, we could do, give some thought to as well.
And, um, is there a minimal depth to the excavation? I mean, are we talking excavation greater than a certain amount? Because.
You could be.
But because we, otherwise we're prohibiting um, normal building.
No, I, I, I don't think, w- w- we're past the point where we're, would have language that would arguably prohibit a, a building permit of any type. When we're, we're definitely talking about, you know, something that's requiring a state level permit, I think.
Okay.
Um, and, and those have their own thresholds for when they, when they apply. I don't know off the top of my head what they are, but I think they have tonnage thresholds in those, in those statutes.
Okay. Um, I just, I know that when we did the, um, sand mining several years ago, there were fourteen hundred sand mines in Michigan at that time. They were everywhere and the state was very favorable to all of them.
That's still, that's still the case. There's.
They become more lenient now, so. I mean, I don't want to create something that we're gonna end up in court in. All right, so is there a motion from anyone?
Um, yeah, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we ask, uh, Nick, um, in light of tonight's discussion, to take another look at that section that was removed and perhaps give us, uh, a recommendation for some different language at our next planning commission meeting.
Okay, move by Row and seconded by, is that Shipley?
Yes.
Shipley. Is there any other discussion towards the motion? Then I will do a roll call. Row.
Yes.
Ailey.
Yes.
DeFranco.
Yes.
Homrick.
Uh, yes.
Shipley.
Yes.
Welk. Is Ed with us? Israel's, yes.
He is muted, but, uh, I, I just asked to unmute.
Okay, and Welk?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. I'd like to thank Nick and, um, I'd like to thank both of our guests this evening for being here. I think you do this a lot to think about and I appreciate your willingness to answer so many questions.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Mr. Boddy. Is there any other questions we needed or can we move on to the next topic here? Or I think we'll move on to old business, uh, master plan review, item B under old business. Lanay and I talked about the master plan review and subcommittees. And I think that, um, I think we're gonna wait. I submitted all of your ideas to the board via John and hopefully those were kind of transmitted to the board. But, um, I can get those out to you again. It's just a compilation of what everyone had suggested that they were really interested in seeing happen or be involved in, in, on a subcommittee. And so, um, that will definitely be a big part of our plan in January when we meet with the board, I believe. And so I guess we're gonna kind of wait till then to talk about this. Is that okay?
Sure. I'm fine with it. Question though, I, I thought there was reference in the minutes, I think, from last month that, you know, you, you were gonna take this feedback from everyone and produce a chart or a matrix.
I can do that. I'm sorry, I didn't do that. I kind of took all the feedback and compiled it and sent it on to you.
But we got the, the board saw the comments, but they asked me last week if the three, if the committees have been formed yet. It'd be, I think it'd be great if by the time of the joint meeting, we could at least say these are the committees. And as of that date, Denise is on this one and Bill's on that one.
Okay.
If that's possible.
It would be helpful to know, I mean, is the board setting the committees or are we setting?
No, we are.
You are.
And we, we were all told, asked to, you know, sign up for one or two assignments, I believe. And I think everyone sent you their choices. And if not.
They did.
Okay.
But they're kind of in, in a different format of just specific choices. And so that's why I wondered if the board was setting the direction.
Now, this is for the planning commission to just, yeah, you know, what are the committees? My understanding, there were three, maybe I'm missing, I'm looking at my notes, but.
Okay, no, I'll.
I think we had, we were like looking at some general broad categories, like one was housing.
Yep.
Um, one was connections and mobility, like related to trails and, um, roadway safety, crosswalks and things like that. And then I think we were toying with one related to rural character that, um, related to chickens, um, tree preservation. Help me, what, what am I forgetting? There's something else under the rural character?
Did you say one such tree?
Tree preservation, yeah.
That tree, yeah. Yeah, and obviously there are items that cross lines, so.
Yes.
Commercial, right, John.
Oh, yeah, the, the idea of, yeah, commercial development. That could maybe.
Yeah, well, we talked about Blue Sky, Blue Star Corridor and Economic Development is one.
Oh, right, so maybe there's four.
Yeah, but mobility could be part of that, yeah.
Yeah, right.
We need, it needs some refinement, but we're getting there, so.
Actually, I, I'm looking at that email. I think, um, that came from Becky. I think it's great. Actually, I think, um, she did really list some things that we all had kind of submitted to her. Maybe we can just, I, I, I think the idea here is we need to come up with a handful of things that we can say are committees and then start filling in. Who, um, I think Becky's got a lot of this work done. We just have to piece it together here. If I'm reading it right, but I think it looks like it's pretty good work already.
Well, I can narrow it down, so I will do that.
Yeah, I think it's great, Becky. I think what you've done already is, I think it can just be more concise and I think that will give everybody what they're looking for.
Sure. I, I guess I was thinking that possibly the board would want to sort of tell us what their strategic goals were and we would move into that too, but we can.
Well, as you know, we, we're, we're, we're in the middle of a three week period where we're setting those strategic goals with an outside facilitator. And also that's one of the, sorry to use the word again, that's a, a goal or a hope for outcome of the joint meeting. So it means good on all this and we just need to refine it, but I don't.
I can do that.
I don't think the planning. I don't think the planning commission and these committees should be asking for more board direction at this point as opposed to this is what the planning commission is suggesting. What do you think, guys? Does this fit with the board, the goals that have been set for 2021?
Okay, we'll do, we'll get that done. I'll do it this way.
And if I'm wrong, they'll they'll kick me, but I I think that's fair to say.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. It's kind of the chicken or the egg thing, but that's great. All right. My apologies and I'll get that done for you. Thank you. All right.
For apologies.
I'm good at apologies.
I think you started already, Becky. I don't think there's apologies. I think.
Always apologize first and then.
Yeah, right. You're so humble. That's cute.
Okay, moving on to uh public comments. Is there any other public comments for the evening? Have we lost our public?
Nope.
I see David has unmuted himself. David?
Yes. Very quickly, um, thank you all very much for taking time to really dig into section D for one, one piece of excavation that was not looked at in depth enough is de-watering. And the process of de-watering that goes along with a very major excavation project is something that actually can impact groundwater at pretty significant depths. Again, I strongly encourage everybody to reread the letter I I wrote and that Griffin Graham sent out. Because it details a hydrological study showing the impact of de-watering on neighborhood wells. Um, and I'll ask uh the hydrogeologists with whom the Coastal Alliance work to um to provide some some analysis as to what a a major infrastructure project that involves de-watering, how it could impact uh wells and and to what depth. But again, thank you for taking time on this this evening.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Any other comments? Moving on to board discussion. Um, township update, that would be John.
Thank you. The township board met last Wednesday, December ninth via Zoom. Opened with public comment. There was a total of eleven members of the public who spoke. One was talking about a suggested uh off-road vehicle ordinance. They're requesting various townships to adopt. And then ten, remaining ten were relative to the suggestion that had been made in the past of the township creating a committee to consider the designation of a historical district commission in and around the Kalamazoo River mouth. Uh, of the ten speakers, nine spoke in favor of moving in that direction and one spoke against it. There were several administrative straight of items considered, including uh updates to our COVID nineteen Preparedness and Response Plan, an application for a CZM, a state coastal zone management grant for the study of options for Lake Shore Drive relative to erosion. There's an opening now on the ZBA as Mike O'Brien has moved into the city of Douglas and out of the township. That's been posted and a discussion and designation of a countywide assessor, which is kind of a formality and doesn't affect us on a day-to-day basis. Then we moved into an agenda item, which was a discussion of the letter received last month from the Army Corps of Engineers requesting township input on the recent opinion from the National Park Service that land within the proposed North Shores Marina Development does qualify for traditional cultural property designation and by the Secretary of the Interior that the area is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. This is part of the Army Corps' section one oh six review of historic property and the potential adverse effect of any proposed development on such designated land. The board voted to have trustee Aldrich and myself, Treasurer Helmrich, work with manager Griffin and Council Curcio crafting uh the township's formal response to the Army Corps of Engineers, which is due in Detroit this Friday. It was also suggested that perhaps a public hearing may be in order regarding a suggested historical commission for the township based on the turnout and public comment. And the board agreed that the need to conduct a joint planning commission board meeting to review the master plan and related issues happened as soon as possible as we discussed earlier tonight, and I will share the dates of January twelve and nineteen with my colleagues on the board tomorrow. And the next time the board will meet is Wednesday, January thirteenth at six P M. Back on Zoom, of course. Any questions or comments?
John, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I know that you, the board previously sent a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers concerning the North Shore property.
Right.
I was wondering if included in that letter was the fact that we had identified a wellhead protection area and that we're currently considering a wellhead protection ordinance and that that property falls within the wellhead protection area.
I'm guessing it did not because that letter was filed by the Army Corps back in February of this year. I've got it here. I'll I'll look at it again tomorrow. And I'll take that comment into consideration when we huddle on, uh, you know, if that if that might be good information to include, but thank you for bringing it up. That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Um, is Linay, do you have any updates?
Um, thank you for asking updates. Um.
Or any further information you'd like to hear?
No, um, I think I think I'm fine. Thank you. Our next meeting is January twenty fifth, I believe. I have not at this time received any applications for that meeting. Um, I do look forward to these committees forming. Uh, there have been some recent conversations with potential applicants um, related to some of these topics. So, you know, when the committees are ready to share any materials or or want to talk, I'd be happy to to pull some bullet points together and and share some thoughts with them. Um, of course, we have all the notes and conversation related to housing um, that I think we want to start maybe putting into ordinance format. Um, so I do anticipate some help or me helping that committee with um, maybe in a more intense way than the other committees. Um, let's see, other than that, um, yeah, we're working remotely and and I'm in the office from time to time.
So. Okay. Do you envision these committees to be independent of township board members or are they just planning commission folks or are they people from the community? Um, how do you or how do you envision these commun- these committees?
I really defer to you as as chairperson on that. I think they could be, I I think uh we have to definitely do a non-quorum and it's a working group. Um, and uh, I think they could include people from the committee. For example, we we had that speaker at the last meeting. Um, Daniel, there's a woman that is on the recycling committee that was interested in doing kind of like a food truck pod uh development. And I spoke to her for a long time and I think, you know, she's, I I don't have her name, unfortunately. I talk a lot every week, but um, you know, I was telling her about this and to participate, you know, in our planning commission meetings that there be a Zoom, but you know, she expressed some interest in that Blue Star Corridor conversation. You know, an interesting thing that we realized in the Blue Star Corridor, we don't allow restaurants to have drive-up and pickup
Yeah.
those and carryout um in some of our districts um on Blue Star. And I have a feeling that was meant to consolidate more of like the the fast food types of establishments near the interchanges and not see that kind of permeate through the rest of the corridor. But now during these times, and I have a feeling that this whole carryout practice, you know, might stick. Some of this stuff might just be common practice. So I think um, as these committees, as you go through the zoning ordinance, it will be a good kind of gut check to just think about, you know, what, what, what what is our community doing on a day-to-day basis right now? What are land uses right now? You know, what is current practice? And weigh that against some of these provisions that just might be antiquated. And know that it's so hard to predict the future. So, you know, certainly there are merits to those provisions back in the day when they were written, but you know, I think there's some things that we need to freshen up in that book.
Okay.
Do you think that perhaps part of forming these committees or part of the the um directive of these committees is that we at least reach out to our counterparts in Douglas and Sagatuck to let them know that we've formed these committees and this is what we're looking into, just in case we run into someone like Garnett who's working with the city and Douglas to establish a Blue Star Corridor. So maybe like offhand, they're actually working on something similar and then we can, you know.
Yeah, I would like to request that your commu- committees, maybe the first thing you do is you kind of write up a mission statement. And you write up, you know, the, write up your membership, you know, your overall kind of goals, your timeframe. Um, and that then we can absolutely share with the planning staff in the other two communities because I did have one joint meeting with them and I would love to have more. And certainly you as planning commissioners can reach out to those individuals yourselves. You don't need to always run it through me, but I'm happy to run some interference on that if you'd like and provide that information. And plus, I think the board will be really interested in just seeing a little write-up for each of your committees. Um, and it gives you guys some ownership and and marching orders and some accountability, right? Because often these committees are established and sometimes they can languish. You know, you can go off on mission creep. You can, you know, all different things can happen. So it might be good to just set that framework early on.
Okay, it sounds like a big project. Sounds interesting. Okay, thank you, Linay. Um, just a couple of things at our next meeting, according to our rules of procedure, we're supposed to have election of officers, but I don't know if we did that in January last year, did we?
Yeah, I mean, it was a January or?
I thought it was, I thought that was in June.
I thought we did. Okay, so that's one thing that we'll have to change in our rules of procedure um, is election of officials and we'll move that to June. All right. And I'll send you an email about that, Linay.
Okay.
Uh, then something else, a couple of people have asked for a larger zoning map of the township with the overlays and the boundaries. And um, just something that's a little easier to read with all the crosshatch lines, et cetera. So is that possible?
Um, I can print eleven by seventeens at the office in color. Um, you all should have picked up those zoning books and if you haven't, please do. I think I put eleven by seventeens in there. That's the largest that we can plot. Um, you know, online, you can certainly zoom in. The other tool that I use all the time is the Alleghan County G I S Parcel Viewer. And you can put any address in the parcel viewer and there's a dropdown menu. And you can click the zoning button and that will show you parcel lines and the zoning for any property in the township. Um, it's really helpful. Um, so that's the best I can do. That said, um, our current zoning map was reprinted and I did not catch this, but we have a zoning district on that print called R four, which doesn't exist in the township. It's a relic that the county um had the the parcel layer and something that I did not catch because I wasn't aware of it. Um, but luckily Joe Malacca spotted it and um, when and if we do update this overlay for the groundwater, when we have the new maps printed, I will make sure that's corrected. Uh, but at that time, I could probably put in an order from the county because they have a large-scale plotter to potentially plot some maps. I think they're twenty-five dollars apiece. So um, you know, if it's something you want, we we might be able to, if you if you want one, we can special order it if you're comfortable covering that potentially. I I don't know how. That's a, that's a.
I think we can cover it.
Okay, that's like, that's something I I don't get into the money side of things, but there is.
But I don't think we would expect people to, unless they want to make a donation, that's a different story.
I could also blow up certain areas and print them on eleven by seventeen. So, yeah.
Okay, I know we do have them in our master plan book, our newest edition, but I don't know if it had all the overlays. I think there was still some confusion.
Clarity, if I may, it's just the clarity of it all. It's less for me about the size and it's more about the clarity of the maps. Um, but I'm glad to hear this Allegheny County G I S Parcel Viewer is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, the parcel viewer. And next time we can be face-to-face, Denise, any Tuesday I'm in, I'd love, you know, stop in and I can run, run you through that tool. Um, it's pretty easy.
Okay, thank you.
Denise and anyone else, I mean, a lot of us use it a lot.
Oh, yeah.
If you go to Allegheny County's website, it's right up there, one of the first offerings on the homepage. As the parcel view.
I feel so silly. This is what my kids do and I should have just said.
Hey, took me a while to get the hang of it, but.
Yeah, me too.
College for two of them to know this and I shouldn't.
That helps when you don't know who who the neighbor to a property is and you need a name. It helped me track down a a guy when our, when Gosford Creek got Beaver Dammed up and I found the guy who lived next to the Beaver Dam, so it's pretty cool.
I think it's been a good resource for real, it seems to.
Yeah, thank you.
The last thing on my list was, um, according to, you know, those, the toolkits, we are supposed to given, provide an annual report. Is that something that the planning commission has done? And it's it's set in coordination with the fiscal year and we have the same fiscal year as the township board. Do we really provide you with an annual report?
Um, let me, I can't recall what we did last year. Um, in another community where I work, it's simply a um table that shows how many requests we had under each of those broad theories like site plan, special land use. You know, it just shows kind of the extent of the work that we've done. It talks about special projects.
Policy updates, things like that.
Ordinance updates, yeah.
All right. So do you do that?
I do it in my other community, yeah. So I just, I'm gonna put that on my list to do here.
Well, um, I mean, I think it would just be a list.
It's it's really just a bullet list. It's one-page memo.
Yeah, it would be that you did all the updates to the application process.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that. The digital, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wondered if that was something that should be on my list and I thought.
Thanks for the reminder. You can keep it on your list and keep poking me.
That's okay. All right, thank you. All right, is um, is there any other uh business that anyone would like to share at this time?
Um, it's not particularly pertains to the planning commission, but um, the recycling committee did um compose a public service announcement. We had a lot of confusion, specifically in the township and misinformation about whether or not we recycle with yellow bags or carts. So we were able to get all the facts from um, Republic and I composed a public service announcement that Griffin just posted on the township Facebook page and that will also come out in the winter newsletter. And it's also going to be published by Douglas and Sagatuck City, so if you want to check it out.
Just a little side note. The January meeting is uh two thousand twenty-one.
Yes. Oh, we did talk about that, Ed, before you.
Okay.
We're in, but.
Sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, that's okay.
Hey, Daniel, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up about the website and the quarterly newsletter. And just want to remind everyone to please tell tell your friends and your neighbors, we really want to get the um the list up. My dream, I'd like to see eight hundred to a thousand town. the list up. Uh, my dream, I'd like to see eight hundred to a thousand township residents receiving our email alerts. They go out all the time. They send the packets for the planning commission, for the board meetings, office closures, all sorts of information. And then four times a year, Griffin puts together a several-page, you know, newsletter with pictures and it's it's fabulous. And, you know, we push it in the tax bills, we talk about it, but, you know, we don't have tons of subscribers. And all you have to do, and this includes any of us that may not be getting it, you email info@sagatucktownship.org and say, please put me on the list and leave your email address. And then you're gonna get all this information because you can't, there can't be too little information, especially these days. Because, you know, we we field all the people that, you know, they, I've had people on the phones, they're incredulous. What do you mean your office is closed? I said, well, the state closed down municipal offices. We're in lockdown due to COVID. Well, no, that was the bars and restaurants. It was like, yeah, well, you heard the sexy stuff, but other things are closed and we're being super, super careful, but.
Oh, we're sexy, John.
You can't assume people know these things, so. So push that email alert and the newsletter. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Anything else tonight? It's been a long night. Thank you, everyone. You're a good group of people to work with. I appreciate everything you've done. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I would move.
I'm sorry, I don't know who made that motion.
It's Bill.
Who was the second one? They can be the supporter.
I I think the second.
Good, go for it.
Row.
All right.
Well, to adjourn, roll call has to be called. Row?
Yes.
Ailey?
Yes.
DeFranco?
Yes.
Helmrick?
Yes.
Shipley?
Yes.
Welk?
Yes.
Israel's, yes. Good night, everyone.
Night.
Holidays, be safe.
Holiday. What?
Yeah, happy holiday.
Happy holiday.
Yeah, happy holiday.
Stay inside, stay safe.